Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the November 12, 2024, Tuolton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Council Hillier.
Hi, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart, and we can say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, so we have a couple announcements. Our first announcement is proclamation declaring November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Tuolton. I believe Aleah is here, and Susan, you coming up too? You gotta give her support. Go ahead, turn your microphones on. Hit the little button. There you go.
Oh, I usually have to call the mayor to get these technological problems solved. So this is nothing new. I'm asking him again. Frank, how do we do this? Thank you, city councilors and president of the city council and mayor. It's good to see all of you here tonight. The proclamation is for the Small Business Saturday on the 30th. Well, in honor of that, we are doing a big campaign, and we're doing it in tandem with West Lynn, Sherwood, and Wilsonville, and it's called Celebrate Local. And so we're going to put this in our newsletter and do an email blast and get this out because if the, our businesses sign up and register and do a profile, then their little business goes on a website on a map. So any citizen can dial up Tuolton and find out where the small businesses are that they could shop at for Christmas. And so we'll be rolling this out very soon. And so I also wanted to give you a quick update about the Chamber of Commerce. We've had a really exciting year and a lot of good things happening. We've had amazing events, and I'm going to have one video played right now so you can see a sample of some dynamic things that we've done at the chamber. This banquet is one of two of our signature events. So this event is every spring. We like to honor our businesses, so we send out nominations.
Congratulations to all the nominees and the winners tonight. You're all an inspiration. And to the Chamber of Commerce for giving us a chance to come together and celebrate and recognize such outstanding individuals and businesses.
Thank you. This is a great honor, and we look forward to building a greater and greater connection.
I'm very surprised. Thank you, everybody. I love the Tuolton Chamber, and I will be around for a long time.
I love this chamber. I've been part of this chamber since 2015. I appreciate this so much, so thank you.
You guys have been so wonderful to us and welcoming us, and it is our pleasure to serve you.
Certainly want to thank all of you for being here, because you know, we're all here because we're passionate. Congratulations.
For all of you businesses, residents in the city, you are our customers, so we just want to thank you very much for that as well.
Thank you to the engagement committee for believing in me.
That's why we live here. That's why we engage with each other. That's why we support each other, is because we still learn. It doesn't matter how old you are. I'll tell you flat out, I'm 78. I still learn every day.
And I just want to say thank you to every single one of you. The businesses are what make us strong and help us to become better and better, and I have so many things this year that the board and myself are looking at and thinking of. Thank you so much, everybody.
This is a different form of business networking where, to me, it's a lot more personable, but when you have events like this, it makes it a lot easier to make those connections and introduce yourself to someone you've never met.
But we have worked so hard for the last two years to redesign it, redevelop it, rejuvenate it. I love this chamber. I love this city, and I think people need to come check us out, come be with us for a while and see what you think. So that was our banquet in March for the Excellence in Business Awards banquet. We had an even more fantastic golf tournament, and she coordinated these two events, so she's done an amazing job for us. Now, what's really exciting is that a few years ago, or a year and a half ago, Jonathan Taylor came to me and said, "The city of Tuolton has created Tuolton Made. I need you to work with OMEP." And I said, "Okay, Jonathan, point me in the right direction." And I got with Bob Cannon of OMEP, and Bob Cannon, and I sat down and he gave me a spreadsheet of all the manufacturing and trades businesses in Tuolton. And when I looked at that trade sheet, I about fell off my chair. There were 270 trades and manufacturers within our city borders, and I was, I had no idea. I thought there were 50 or 60. You guys hide them well. You've got the trees all covering them up, because you wouldn't know it. You're driving around Tuolton, it's a lovely little city that's just pretty. And then you keep driving and you find all these manufacturers of some major, major industry. So we created Titanium because of that at the chamber. So it's a new level of membership specifically for our trades and manufacturers with specific relevant benefits that serve them. And we're rolling that out right now. We have six charter members of Titanium, and I'm going after all 270, so we'll see how we do. But the chamber's thriving. We have an excellent board. We have more than 33 volunteers, and we are very volunteer-driven, have some of the best volunteers I've ever worked with. So thank you so much for your support and partnership and all the things you've all done. Thank you for your wonderful testimonials on our videos, Mayor, and I appreciate it. And we are going to help our local businesses get more traffic this season.
All right, and Councilor Gonzalez will read the proclamation.
Thank you very much. That was a very, very nice video. It's very inspiring to see that as a council, so thank you so much, and it's an honor for me to read this proclamation with you. Whereas the city of Tuolton, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 255,574 small businesses in Portland, Vancouver, and Hillsborough metropolitan, statistically area, representing 99.2% of all firms with paid employees and 50.2% of all employees, and whereas 97% of the consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community, and whereas according to the 2022 Small Business Economic Impact Study, .68 of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and that every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional .48 cents in local business activity as a result of employee and local businesses purchasing local goods and services, and whereas the American Express 2023 Saturday Consumer Insight Survey reported that 59% of the U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant or Small Business Saturday, and 61% strongly agree that they found a small business or independently-owned restaurant on a Small Business Saturday where they are likely to return and become a regular customer, and whereas Tuolton, Oregon strongly supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Tuolton does hereby proclaim November 30, 2024, Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Introduced, adopted, this 12th day of November, 2024.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can I say something?
I was surprised you didn't.
I don't want you to be surprised. As you know, I'm on the Board of Directors, and I've been involved with the chamber for 10, 11 years now, so I'm the historian. And I've seen a lot of change over the last 10 years from when I started to now, and I want to back Aleah up and just say to the city and to you all as a council and to all your staff, how easy it is to work with you all and how receptive, especially, you don't see it every day, but we see it more with the staff than you probably do, how receptive they are. If I make a phone call to Steve Koper or anyone in the staff and say, "I need an answer," or "I have a question," or "Our business needs some help," and it's immediate. And that, that is what has been built over the last 10 years that I've seen, is the relationship that we have with the city and with everyone involved in the city. And we can't do it without you. You can't do it without us. And it's a partnership that doesn't get built up very often or that most people know about, but it's really important and it's valued. And I personally say thank you because I really appreciate that I can call anyone in the city and get an answer right away, and, or they'll call the person I need to have an answer right away. Happened on last Friday. I had a question from a, from a business, and they got, they got a response with probably within two hours. And I find that not only remarkable with how busy everyone is, but how that partnership has sustained and that we can do that. So I personally say thank you, and I hope the community knows too how much we work together and, and how we, we work to support all, everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. We will put this somewhere wonderful in the chamber. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do I tap it off?
You can leave it on. Mike's going to talk next. All right, that brings us item number two, the American Public Works Association, APWA, Oregon Project of the Year Award for Tuolton Moving Forward. Here comes Mike with the award. Ooh. Call this, this is the second award that Tuolton Moving Forward has won. We won an award for the, from the League of Oregon Cities also.
Yeah, this is an exciting one. Good evening, I'm Mike McCarthy, city engineer, and got a fun phone, fun phone call about a month and a half ago, and was at the Oregon chapter of the American Public Works Association Conference a few weeks ago. And at the banquet, we got this award for Project of the Year in Transportation, and it's 25 million to 75 million is the category that we're in. And I think it was a fun part of the story, thank you very much, was, so we ended up being their top-ranked transportation project of all the ones statewide, and we were right on that 25 million line, which is their dividing line. And they said, "Well, our second-ranked project is in the smaller category, so could you go to the bigger category?" And sure. So this is the PowerPoint presentation that they showed at the award ceremony, the 2024 Project of the Year awards. And yeah, they really liked how we listened to the people in developing the program, or I have to say, you know, the staff who was here before I got here, and also have to give credit to Jeff Fox for really setting things up well. And Projects of the Year, 27 million to 75 million. They liked the way we listened to the people and really built a program of projects that the people wanted, and then spent their money wisely, various projects all over the city, ranging from, you know, some of our big congestion issues to a lot more of our neighborhood level crossings, to fixing some of our longstanding needs and building things that help people get to schools and parks safely, how we're able to find some good practical solutions and really focus on meeting the, the need we heard from the public as efficiently as we could, and how we communicated thoughtfully and intentionally throughout the whole project, did our best to treat everybody with respect and care, and were able to really just deliver the results that we're hoping for. And so I was excited to be a part of the program and blessed to be with such a great staff team and such a great council to work with. So thank you all, and big thank you to everybody on the team. And our next steps are to apply for the national award that we're now eligible for that will be coming soon.
Will you share the timeline of the next part of the process with us, please?
I believe the deadline is in January to apply for the nationals, and then they'd be awarded next, I think we'd find out in the spring and actually gets awarded next summer at the national conference.
Well, thanks again, Mike. As you mentioned, all the folks involved, the staff, consultants, construction folks, and community itself, and this was a fantastic program. We hit it out of the ballpark for using that blueprint as well for the program. What do you think, Mayor?
Great, thank you, and I think I need to give a big shout out to Consor as the program manager, Bill Ebenuch, who I think did a really good job strategically, and then Alta and Katie Mangle for doing a great job reaching out to the people and facilitating that listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings your public comment. Sorry.
Whoopsie. All right, that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding a subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room, I'll take the folks in the room first, and then we'll move over to Zoom. I've got one person signed up, but you don't have to be signed up if you'd like to make a comment tonight. First person I have signed up is Mr. O'Neill. Welcome.
My name is Danny O'Neill, and I was a recent candidate for the city council. I'd like to issue my congratulations to Cindy on her reelection. While I wasn't successful this time, I will continue to be active in the city's progress and my role as a land use officer for Byram CIO. Living in Tuolton since 1995 has been both enjoyable and extremely rewarding. This community was one that I chose when I went to work for a company in Newburgh, and being here was 1995, it has changed a little bit. My focus today is on traffic safety. It was one of the issues that I chose as part of what I was campaigning on, and on the growing traffic and safety challenges in our city across all forms of transportation, cars, bicycles, electric scooters, and pedestrians. We must all adapt to ensure that everyone can use our streets and sidewalks safely. With the increased use of electric scooters, bicycles presents new complexities, making it crucial for public awareness and education on safe practices. Or ignoring this, we risk seeing more excellence and safety concerns. I believe that the creation of a comprehensive education and awareness program is needed. First, be in public education. Partnering with law enforcement and public safety officials to develop clear, accessible educational materials. These will outline traffic laws, regulation, best practices tailored to the needs of drivers, the cyclists, scooter users, and of course, our pedestrians. An awareness campaign, launching citywide campaigns to promote road safety, leveraging social media, local news outlets, public service announcements, and partnerships with our CIOs, community involvement organizations. This will reinforce the importance of safe and responsible behavior on our streets and Community engagement, hosting feedback sessions, we can gather input from residents on safety concerns and discuss potential problems, solutions. This will allow us to tailor our approach to the unique needs of the neighborhood, making sure everyone is heard. The goal is to foster patience, respect, and responsibility for everyone, making safety a shared priority. Together, we can create a system that supports our growing population and the well-being of every Tuolton resident. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council, and the reason this, I picked this issue is when I was out campaigning, it seemed to be a big concern of most of the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room would like to provide a public comment? Come on up.
Is this open forum?
Open forum.
Oh, bye.
You've got your three minutes.
I had to pick him up for Taekwondo. This is neat. I am a resident here since 96.
What's your name?
Roy Clark.
Okay.
School teacher, retired school teacher. Last week, watching Judge Judy on the couch and said, you know, it's time for me to do some volunteer, get, get off the couch here a little bit. And I went to Wilsonville Veterans Ceremony, and the ma, Wilsonville mayor spoke and council members were there, and I, and I looked online, I go, "Well, what's Tuolton got going here?" Nothing. They got, had a breakfast three days before, but I couldn't find anything. So I'm just kind of planting a seed here, next year, can we get, and then I talked to Nicole De Day, and she says, "Hey, they got Plaza going." So that was new to me, and I, she goes, "Go check," and I went, "Wow." And so I know we're going to have something next year now. After I saw that Plaza, I go, "That's it. We got to have something for Veterans Day." So I'm offering up my help, whoever, maybe you can steer me to who's heading that up, and I'll put up chairs, and I'm excited to get off the couch. And so maybe if someone can tell me, when is that opening? Is that this spring or?
There's a soft opening now, but the official ribbon cutting will be next year in May for Memorial Day. There's, as they complete the structures, there's pieces of art that will be installed next year.
Okay.
And so the official big opening will be in May for Memorial Day.
Okay. And the only other thing I want to say is, two weeks ago, I was in Washington, D.C., never been there because my 10-year-old grandson wanted to see how laws were made. And so we went, and he understood the House for us, he learned about, and he saw the city council, and he goes, "What does city council do?" I go, "Well, let's find out." Anyway, thank you for your time.
So as far as your first question, the VFW you want to talk to, they're above, you know where Maschida's is? Maschida's Teriyaki?
Okay.
The brick building? They're housed upstairs.
They're, they're going to spearhead that.
The VFW runs the Memorial Day and runs Veterans Day. They provide volunteers, they do everything you want to get involved.
Great. How about that Plaza? Are they going to run that or?
They don't run it, they provide it feedback.
They're, they're going to have feedback that, now, did you, May 2025?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right. All right. Anyone else? All right, how about on Zoom? Okay, going once, going twice. All right. That brings us to consent. These items are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session irregular meeting minutes on October 28, 2024. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5819-24, awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreement with Jensen Use for Plan Review and Inspection Services. And finally, item number three, consideration of resolution number 5820-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement with Tuolton Police Officers Association sergeants. Would any city councillor like an item removed from the consent agenda and heard later tonight?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read. Approve the consent agenda as read?
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's six to zero, unanimous. Thank you. That brings us, so there's Brett. You got to know it's the Arts Committee, we see Brett float in. Special reports to Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee Community Enhancement Award. I see Julie, I see Dawn, I see Janet. Brett was up there.
He's just watching.
All right. Welcome Janet and Dawn for the second time today.
That's right. Well, good evening, Mayor Buevenik and council. I'm Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager, and I am pleased to be here tonight with two members of our Arts Advisory Committee. We have Janet Steiger-Carr, who is our committee chair, and Dawn Upton, longtime committee member, and they are going to tell you about the Community Enhancement Award tonight. And I'm going to hand it off to Janet.
There you go. Forgive me.
Advance the slide.
Wait, 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 got to read this, got to read this. Community Enhancement Award. You know I like to read these things. Was created to recognize individuals and organizations for their contributions to significant arts endeavors and experiencing within the Tuolton community. The Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee identifies award candidates and makes recommendations to the city council. Thank you all. Indulge me, please, while I read the 12 past recipients, because I think it's pretty darn cool. 2023 Angela Ratz, our watercolorist, who has Wild About Watercolors and curates the library art pieces. Absolutely wonderful. SNA Irish Entertainment, 2019, The Dance That Goes Into The Grange. If you haven't seen that, please get yourself over there. Trimate Koho Commute. I love those windsock, Koho salmon. Those are fabulous. 2019, that's at Mohawk and Martinazzi. The Community at Marquee, Marquee Cafe, 2018. Their integration of that floor into that space was absolutely stellar. We had to recognize that. Mask and Mirror, Community Theater Production of Singing in the Rain, 2016. That's self-explanatory. Centra Cow Properties, 2015. That magnificent mastodon at Nyberg Rivers out in front of biology. Love that. Janine Miller, Tuolton High School, 2014, art teacher and program director there. We have some of her art, I believe, in the Heritage Center. The Lewis and Floetta-Eyed Healing Garden, Meridian Park Hospital, 2013. In April of 2023, I had occasion to knead that garden, and believe me, it helped heal that day. Dawn Armstrong, McDonald's Restaurants, The Leaping Salmon Water Feature, 2011. Wonderful. Althea Pratt-Broom. I'm sorry, Willowbrook Arts Camp, 2011. We're coming up on the anniversary of when we lost her. And as a talented and gifted teacher for the University of Oregon for 27 years, I cannot tell you how gifted her work was with those kids. Lumiere Players, 2010. Thank you. Now, as a theater professional working in non-traditional alt ed and charter school locations for 47 years, this particular award is incredibly important to me. The 2024 award recipient is Mitch Charter School. For the inclusion of students in the creation of permanent and temporary arts installations and the integration of art into core curriculums. Mitch strives to offer an inclusive and culturally responsive environment where all families and students and students feel seen, heard, and supported. And I turn it over to my committee member, Dawn Upton, who submitted this particular nomination.
Thank you. Good evening. Along with providing a place for expression and education of art to our young community members, Mitch has sought to incorporate its students in the creation of permanent and temporary installations. By having hands-on involvement, students have expressed pride and ownership in making their mark for themselves, their school, their community, and for future students. Thank you.
And at this time, I would like to welcome Sarah Parker, Mitch Board President, up to accept this award. And then I'll have Dawn and Janet up as well, and I will take a picture of the group.
Get more pictures of the murals on the walls. See if there are pictures of the murals. Ollies, I can't.
Not included there. Included submission, yes. Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Come on in. All right. One, two, three, smile. Excellent. Thank you so much.
If you ever have a chance to visit the Mitch School, once you pass the locked doors and everything, they have some fantastic murals that both the students and the teachers and parents have painted on the walls that are fantastic, super colorful, super meaningful. So if, sometimes there's an open house or when they have an open house for next year's enrollment, pop in and take, check it out because it's, it's very enlivening when you walk down the hallway. It's not the boring drab hallways, lots of color, lots of pop. And congratulations again. Tell Caitlin she's doing a great job, too. All right. That brings us to general business. Item number one, Republic Services, 2023 Annual Report. Welcome.
I'll just share. You have my side.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Lindsay Marshall, Management Analyst in Public Works. And I am just here to introduce and welcome our partners at Republic Services, Travis Comfort and Cindy Rogers. We are glad to welcome them back every fall to get their annual report. This year, it's the annual report from the year 2023. They operate on a calendar year. And they're just going to hear, here to tell us about the great work that they've done in our community, give some numbers, updates on a variety of programs, things like that. So I will go ahead and let them take it away and I'll be back there if you need me.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay. I'm just gonna roll. I think.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Cindy Rogers and I am the Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services. And I'm joined here this evening by Travis Comfort, our contract administrator. Our presentation this evening is a review of the essential services that we provided for the city of Tuolaton in 2023. Travis will start us off by reviewing current services, Recycle Plus, and give an update on the food waste program. And then I will wrap us up by reviewing events, financials, and the opportunity to recycle. And then we'll be back in early 2025 to update council on the Recycling Modernization Act. So I will hand it off to Travis.
Thank you, Cindy. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Travis Comfort and it's a pleasure to be with you all here this evening, and we appreciate this opportunity. As you can see on slide two, we have 20 drivers servicing the city of Tuolaton. Last year, they serviced more than 5,900 homes 12 times each month. That figure doesn't quite include the number of times that they're also servicing your glass bin, which also includes motor oil and batteries. Last year, they lifted just over 850,000 carts, and we hauled just over 43,000 tons of material out of the city of Tuolaton. We're excited to let you know that the trucks of the future have arrived. So our first electric garbage truck arrived in October and has been servicing the city of Tuolaton ever since. And I'm hoping this video plays. Oh, yeah. So this is just down the road in, on the Cheyenne Street, just off of Tuolaton. But you can, no engine noise. So it's a lot quieter, it's got a lot more safety features, and then you can see the wraparound glass on the front of the truck. So the driver's visibility is greatly improved with these trucks. So we'll be back to update you all more in 2025 on that. As many of you may remember from my last presentation, we've launched Recycle Plus in Tuolaton. The customers are very happy with the service. And coming into the holidays, we're going to be doing our string light recycling program again. So there was a lot of great participation for that last year. We even had people sign up just to do that, and then they dropped the program, which is fine. It's a great program, and then it's good to keep that material out of the landfill. We'll be back in 2025 to update you all on the multifamily service for Recycle Plus and then to do an adjustment on those rates. This is more of a recent update, so this isn't particularly to do with 2023, but more recently, within the last couple of months. So while the metro food waste mandate did come into effect before the pandemic, county enforcement had not started until about a month ago. And now they've let us know that they're done with the unincorporated generators and they'll be focusing on the cities now. So they're going to be working more with Lindsay and staff in terms of talking and outreach to your businesses. We have already started getting contacted by businesses. Businesses can either go through the county or directly through us. We find that it's more beneficial for them to go through us because, and like you'll see in these pictures on this slide and the next two slides, there's a lot of considerations both inside the business and then also in their container storage area. So this is behind the Country Inn Bar and Grill in Maschida's Teriyaki. We were just talking, the mayor was mentioning the VFW is up top. So they've just started the service, they got outreach by the county, they were notified that they had to participate in the program. And because of the, the space and the type of alley structure they have, so there's no cars in this picture currently, but almost every morning, there's leftover cars from the bars from the night before, there's double parking. So we weren't able to give them a front load container. But they're doing so well that now we're doing three carts per week for just Maschida's. So I think already the number is 195 gallons per week that we're diverting from the landfill just with that one restaurant, and that's estimated to be over 10,000 gallons per year. So the program's going very well. Just wanted to draw your attention to properly prepared material and then what we see is contamination. So if restaurants or businesses want to use a bag, they need to use a compostable BPI bag. And then what we see in containers that aren't like secured behind an enclosure, you'll have pedestrian trash winding up in there. So somebody was walking behind the bar in this case, and they just threw their Starbucks cup in the food waste bin. So it's clearly labeled, there's stickers all over the cart, and then yet you still get some contamination in there that isn't even from the business itself. So that's just some of the stuff we see. And we just wanted to let you know that we're continuing to work with the businesses. And in terms of residential, what you see in the chart is that there's been a slight uptick in the terms of volume of residential material, but the increased winter and storm volume generation that we saw in 2020 and 2022 kind of puts it at a little bit of a wash with just this four-year graph here. But we do have, the drivers have let us know that they are seeing the carts out more frequently. So our update next year, we're anticipating greater volumes of residential material as well. So this is the residential service on a whole. So this is all three streams. And what you'll see here is that the majority of Tuolaton residents have a 35 or 65 gallon cart service. And that last year, we hauled just over 8,800 tons of residential material out of Tuolaton. You can see that broken down by stream in that gray column on the right there. On slide 10, this is our commercial overview. So what you can see here is that for the 780 commercial customers that we have in Tuolaton, we hauled just over 13,000 tons of material in 2023. And for drop box services, for just over 8,600 hauls, that was just over 21,000 tons of material. Again, this is a residential material, year-over-year chart. And the best part about this is that we're seeing consumption and generation trends coming down from the pandemic highs. And Tuolaton's also got the inverse of the growth pattern in terms of the state, because in the state, per generation of trash and recycling is still on the rise. So Tuolaton is showing a decrease in generating these materials while the state is increasing the materials they're generating. As many of you know, running a safe operation is one of our top priorities. Our supervisors hold daily tailgating sessions with the drivers to kind of reinforce that. And here you can see an unscheduled driver check-in. So these are two of our operations supervisors. They check the status of the truck, so tire inflation, all the equipment working, and then also just spot checking the driver. So this is right after they've dropped off their load at the Wilsonville facility. On slide 14, you can see two photos from a recent fire we had at our facility in Wilsonville. The number one cause of truck fires are batteries. So these are household batteries that have become compromised in the system. This is a compacted load trailer, so we compact the material before hauling it away to a landfill. So in this case, both our staff and the fire department were able to put that out without any sort of equipment or facility damage. This also happened to be on the same day that Cindy was giving a tour to Wilsonville's Mayor Fitzgerald. And even the mayor has to sign at the front desk when they come in and visit and do a tour. And not a minute after she was done getting through the tour and like, why we have to do all that, the fire alarm went off. And so it was a prime example. But Tuolaton residents can safely recycle their batteries each week in their glass bin, so up to a one-quart Ziploc bag of batteries each week. Just tape the ends of the non-alkylines batteries and then put that on top of any other material that you have in the glass bin. And then we do have a quick little video put together by Clackamas County that I also hope you might share with people. Whoops. Can you play it? This was just put out.
All these three easy steps to get your batteries ready to recycle curbside. One, prepare. Tape the ends of all batteries except alkaline using clear tape. If you have button cell or coin batteries, you can save time by laying out a long piece of tape. Place the button cell batteries on the tape, being sure not to let batteries touch each other. And then place another long piece of tape on top. Two, bag. Place taped and untaped batteries together in a clear one-quart ZipSeal plastic bag. Three, set out. Place the ZipSeal bag on top of the glass bottles and jars in your glass bin and set out on your regular garbage day. Please only set out the glass bin when it is at least half full. There's a limit of a single bag per pickup. Find out more about recycling batteries and get other recycling tips at clackamas.us/recycling/batteries or call 503-234-3000. You can also use this QR code.
Perfect. So on a brighter note, I've been in this position for five and a half years. And so in terms of customer feedback, I would like to say that it has drastically improved over that period of time. And then these were some of the better comments that we received in 2023, and we wanted to highlight those. And just to remind you all that from, you know, birthday drive-bys, helping businesses out with their food waste, our drivers and staff really do care about delivering a good service to the city of Tuolaton. And I'll pass it back to Cindy to wrap us up.
Thank you, Travis. And I do just want to give out a shout out to Tenille at Clackamas County for putting together that video. We really appreciate it and we have shared it quite a bit and we find it very beneficial. So thank you to Tenille. Again, thank you, Travis. The next two slides are for the Neighborhood Cleanup Events that we do at Stone Ridge. These are hugely popular events and have become annual events. Last year, we collected almost eight tons. And these events are for bulky items, so these are items that will not fit into your dumpster, so mattresses, couches, old cribs, old, you know, car seats, you know, things that just people just seem to accumulate over the course of the year. So, so the next, the next slide, this year, we had a little less participation, but still, less tons, but still great participation, and we collected over six tons. So those are great events. So in addition to the Neighborhood Cleanup Events at Stone Ridge, we also do an annual bulky waste event at our transfer station, WRI in Wilsonville. Public Works helps to staff that event, and they do a food drive for Tuolaton Food Pantry. Last year, we had 196 vehicles and they brought in 25 tons. So the following slide is this year's bulky waste event. And as you can see, the bulky waste event, we had 240 vehicles and they brought in nearly 29 tons. So those are also very popular events. So this slide, last year, we had the honor of hosting Toys for Tots in collaboration with the U.S. Marine Corps. And this, this was open to Tuolaton, Wilsonville, and Lake Oswego. Items, excuse me, it was a bulky waste event where we collected over $300 in cash donations and 249 toys. And after the event, we continued to collect toys, so we collected another 176 toys. So in total, 242, 200 and, excuse me, 425 toys. So unfortunately, this year, we weren't able to do it because we have construction going on in front of WRI. However, we are still doing a toy drive, so we do, and I encourage people to drop off a toy at our transfer station in Wilsonville. And then we expect to resume the Toys for Tots in 2025. Next slide. So I've been in the solid waste industry for a little over 12 years, and there's one thing that I know for sure, and then that is that kids love garbage trucks. Our drivers love it when the kids come out and greet them, and our drivers get to see these kids grow up. And part of growing up is having a birthday. And our drivers and our ops staff, they'll make a special trip when somebody's having a birthday and they'll drop off a special gift for them. So it's pretty cool to see these kids grow up over the years, and our drivers will report to us, you know, like certain kids are going off to college and, you know, it's just, it's super sweet. So, next slide. So this slide shows our statement of income and table of expenses. And I am happy to report that we will not be requesting a rate adjustment for 2025. It's definitely a benefit for the city of Tuolaton to have WRI so close. This helps to keep the transportation's costs down. And we also did a reroute, and that helped with our efficiencies. In 2023, the revenue was over $12 million, and the city received over $300,000 in franchise fees. And we are projecting to have about 6% growth this year. Cost of operations only increased by about 2.2% in 2023, which is less than CPI. And so again, I'm happy to report there's no adjustment needed. Next slide. Opportunity to recycle is a requirement by DEQ for recycling and educational outreach via newsletters, direct mail, invoice notes, and in-person outreach. In 2023, the county's in-person outreach no longer counted for the city's in-person outreach. And so unless the event was hosted in the city of Tuolaton, then it, then it wouldn't count. That has meant that there's been more work for city staff and for Republic Services. However, the new e-waste event that will be coming up in 2025 will count for waste reduction outreach. Annual reporting regarding recycle and education will be increasing with the launch of the Recycling Modernization Act. Excellent. So the launch of the Recycling Modernization Act is in July of 2025. So we'll be back early next year to update council on where we're at with that. And thank you so much for your time. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Counselor Gonzalez?
I have one comment, so thank you very much. It's very heartwarming to me to hear that you guys actually do that and have the birthdays and the stops, and that's just so special that you guys can do that. I'm just super impressed by that. So thank you for sharing that dose to me.
Some of the kids know all three of their drivers, their yard driver, by name. It's, it's amazing. I had no idea.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's really cool to talk to our drivers because they, they know these kids, you know, they've seen them grow up and they know like when they go off to school or, you know, when they have their graduations and all these different, like big life events, you know? So we have some drivers that have been with us for, I mean, like 25, 30-plus years. So you can imagine all the kids that they've seen grow up over that time.
That electric truck showed up in front of our house and our kids just flipped out how big and beautiful it looked and they were, okay. And I went to run to go see it, it had left before I could even do it. So it was nice to see it. So I took a picture with our kids. They were very excited to see. That would be a good tour, just to park in the library, just have kids come down, look at that thing.
Well, we do touch a truck, so we can do a touch.
Yeah, we can, we can set it up.
Yeah, so we'll be able to do a touch a truck. Yeah, so we'll be able to do a touch a truck with the EV truck, yeah. Yes.
Counsel President Pratt. I think you had your hand up.
Okay. Oh, you kind of alluded to it, but, you know, we started the program where you could put your pizza boxes in the.
In the food waste, yeah.
Food waste. Have you seen any?
We've seen an uptick in people using their yard debris cart all year. So we saw more set out throughout the year than we saw in 2023. So we're estimating in 2024, those numbers rising a lot more than we saw in 2023.
Okay, great. And then, sure would be nice to see a truck in our holiday lights parade, just saying.
Yeah, the team really liked it last year, so they decorated our Recycle Plus truck for last year, so.
It was very popular.
They would love to do it again.
Yep, I'm getting to that.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Sacco.
I just want to say thank you for the work done in the Las Casitas neighborhood and providing that service to them. The community really appreciates that, so thank you for that.
Yeah, they've been going great.
Other questions, comments? There's a question on the business side. So how, I know your biggest, one of your biggest challenges is commodities and pricing. Any change? I know still plastics is out. How about glass and cardboard? Has it come back or still?
Cardboard's pretty good, but like with the new recycling law, we'll have to send all that material to responsible end markets that are either permitted or licensed by DEQ. So within probably the next four or five months, we should have a list to be sharing. We'll be back next year with a couple updates. But all of Tuolton's material will have to go to one of those approved sites. So there'll be more transparency in terms of like what markets are available for those materials, instead of like each month, our operations guy calling and seeing if there's an available slot to send that to. So yeah, we should have an update on that pretty soon.
And then the Recycle Plus, because I think part of the challenge I have in is most people still don't know about it. You've got a competitor who sends postcards to my house when there's not supposed to be doing that in the city. Are you seeing any upticks with that, or how are you going to get the word out?
We're seeing a little bit of an uptick. We're working on a quarterly messaging campaign that we're going to launch next year and continuing to work with Lindsay to get it in the newsletter. And then we're hoping also with the new recycling law that we can add more items to that program as well. So we're also looking at ways of expanding that, not only in terms of multifamily and then a commercial level service, because there are businesses that are also interested in it, but also the materials themselves that can be collected in it.
All right. So Counsel Reyes, you had your.
It was going to be on the Recycle Plus thing too, because I have been asked, just a couple people I come across, how do they get rid of, like, clothing that they don't want to, I guess it's not merit to go to, you know, Goodwill, because it's just probably not, they won't be able to sell it. But they were just wondering, like, how do, like, I get a pile of clothes? And I just kind of just gave you guys this number, but I don't know what. They just, I guess the hope of having more information on how to get rid of this stuff, including the Amazon package bags or those plastic, I mean, it's just sometimes, I just keep them, and then I go and drop them off, but still, or take them back to Kohl's or something, whatever. But I feel like more information out there on that will help our community.
Yeah, we're going to be, like, when we table at events and things like that, we'll be also promoting Recycle Plus more at those types of things. I think, I mean, I think that goes a long ways when you can, like, actually demonstrate to people, you know, bring the little cart, like what you did when you came here and did the presentation on it. So we'll be doing more of that, too. Yeah.
Especially like Earth Day and like the school outreach and stuff. It's been really slow since the pandemic, getting back into the schools, but we are seeing more outreach for like touch truck and coming in to talk to the students. So any more encouragement you can do with that, we're more than happy to get back into the schools, and we find that that's the best place to really reach that education, because the kids take it home, and they really try to encourage mom and dad to recycle like they've just heard in school, so.
Or guilt them into it.
Or guilt them into it, yeah.
Whatever works.
Light bulbs is another thing that they ask. So just, those are the things, light bulbs, clothing, batteries, but you explained the battery, which I'm able to explain that, but the light bulbs and the clothing, I'm still kind of.
And the clothing's the heaviest item that we collect in the Recycle Plus, but the plastic, like the Amazon bags and the clamshells are like the more popular items. But we do see, the heaviest item is the textiles. And that's primarily going to like dog beds and that kind of stuff, so for filler.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for coming, and thank you for the good news about no rate increase. That's very positive.
It warms my heart to be able to say that.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, that brings us to item number two, consideration of ordinance number 1495-24, amending Tuolton Municipal Code 8-1-252 to add an additional street southwest 96th Drive. This is the parking zone thing, right?
Yeah.
It is. We clearly didn't coordinate a presentation.
At first, I was like, we're adding a new street? I'm like, no. They said, add a new street to the restricted parking. Yeah.
This is just bringing forward, it is an ordinance change, so it couldn't be on consent, but it is effectuating the direction you gave us at the last council meeting to install a parking permit zone on 96th.
So what we're doing is voting on it?
Yes.
All right. I can't remember, is this a voice vote or a roll call vote?
Ordinance on general business is a voice vote.
Okay, cool.
A roll call, a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Your Honor, just to clarify, this is an ordinance, so it does require two readings. They can be by title only.
Let's do it.
If it's unanimous, it can be, it'll pass the vote if not.
Yeah. You don't make the rules.
I motion that we have a reading by title only of ordinance, first reading by title only of ordinance number 1495-24.
Second.
I have a motion of second for first reading by title only, ordinance number 1495-24. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel.
I don't know if that was the right time for discussion.
Okay.
But, so, I'm still having a hard time with this, with this ordinance. And Mayor, I don't think you were here last time you were on vacation, but I, my fear is that we are just kicking this problem to another area of our city. And I understand that the concern is that there are some vulnerable community members in, on this street that are having trouble getting assistance to their homes. My concern is that we're inadvertently, we could inadvertently cause the same issue for other residents in our city because these students are going to have to park somewhere. I also understand that there is parking at the churches that are close to the school, but there's no confirmation that these students are going to park there and not just in front of somebody else's house. So I don't think that we are solving a problem for our city. I think we're solving a problem for these few residents on this street, and we're inadvertently causing an issue for other residents of Tuolton that is yet to be seen. So I don't know if it's possible at this point, but something that I've considered over the last two weeks is, could we enforce this parking zone maybe just on one side of the street? So if there is an emergency, that emergency vehicle could get to the emergency if needed. Otherwise, I think that we will, I mean, I still think that we'll be causing issues in other parts of our city, because again, these kids are going to park somewhere. But I think maybe that's a happy medium to allow some reprieve for this street, but also, you know, maybe not put as much stress in someplace else in our city.
Is that like a friendly amendment? How would you handle that?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Under the council rules, if there is a motion to approve the ordinance, and there is a second, at that point, it can be, there can be a motion to amend, and the council would then discuss the motion to amend, whatever the language of that may be. If the motion to amend passes, then the council would go back to the main motion to discuss passage of the ordinance as amended.
Do you have the first and second reading first, or?
First, second reading, then get to the motion, then show.
And we will have a discussion about the council rules and the charter and how the mode of enactment. I think how the council has previously done it in past, it is not in error to do it that way. There is a more streamlined process that I will discuss at another time as far as passage of ordinances, but I believe we've had the first reading, and there has been a motion to amend. I think that it's fine to go forward if there is a motion to amend on the table, to discuss the motion to amend, and then move forward from that.
So you have the first motion to amend, second, and then go from there.
And if there is a motion to amend, and that the council passes that motion, you go to the main motion, and that would be the set, you would have a second reading by title only. Technically, under the charter, it is by title only if certain provisions have been met, and that is, a copy has been delivered to every member of the council, and the proper notice has been given per the charter, which has been in this case. It can be by title only unless a counselor requests it be read in full.
Okay.
Yep.
So we've got the motion for first reading by title only, so we can do that, and then we can get to the amendment one after that. Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. So I've done a little research in the last couple weeks and driven on that road and talked to people at different times, and I would like to suggest to this body that pictures may have been taken on days in worst-case scenarios, because it certainly doesn't look like that every day, every school day. And I'm concerned about passing this, not just to kick it down the road, but I'm also concerned about us changing an ordinance before we have the consultant's review back, and that we may be in a position to consider taking something back that we would have given today. And so I am not comfortable with this at all.
Okay.
Your Honor, I will note, I'll bring up Council Rule 3A, 1B. After introduction, the council may direct my majority vote of the members present any of the following actions. A public hearing on the ordinance be held. Two, refer the ordinance to committee for review and recommendation. Three, refer the ordinance to the city manager for further revision. Four, pass the ordinance to a second reading. Or five, reject the ordinance in whole or in part. I think technically, given what's transpired now, that would be the appropriate action under the council rules, is to pick one of those.
One of those items. Go ahead.
Are we discussing the amendment? What are we doing?
What are we doing?
I mean, because I thought we were going to go for title, for first reading by title only. And then have a discussion, have an amendment motion on the floor. If the amendment motion doesn't carry, then we go to second.
And I'm just addressing what Counsel Hillier had brought up. We're still in the discussion mode. There has been a motion to amend yet. These are just the options for the council to move forward.
Are we still discussing?
I guess we're still discussing.
Okay, then.
Counsel has.
I am more like, I'm thinking of this because of the, I disagree respectfully with having one side and then the other one not. I think that's just going to cause a lot more problems. So it's either we decide to have an ordinance that's going to be equal for the residents there that are 24/7, and they, you know, that's where they live, that's everything they have, or we leave it as it is, or, but I don't think that having one side and the other one will solve. I think it will increase problem. And then which side? We don't know. Left side, right side? I don't think it's going to be fair for, will be fair for everyone. I still stand on that. We're thinking about creating a future generation that needs to be conscious about other people, needs to be also respectful about the law, ordinances, and this is a way of like, in a way, teaching them also that you can't just park anywhere, you have to also obey what's there, the rules. And there are already rules. There are plenty of spaces, and also the reduction, we always promote here, reduction of driving carbon footprint, and we're trying to make people be more conscious about the environment, drive less, or carpool. I mean, we're always encouraged to do that. What better age, at this age, to start promoting that? Because it is the world that we are going to, hopefully, they will adopt as they get older and mature, but also respectfully, being respectful of these areas is also important to me. And so I disagree with the whole one side and the other. I think that's not going to solve the problem, that's my opinion, but I still stand that we should move forward with this ordinance. We've done it in the other side, where it's really unfair that this community have came, have come here and told us their issues, and we're just, I'm not going to listen to them, but the other section, the other residents in the side, we're going to listen. So I feel like we're being a little bit unfair. That's just my take, but that's my, where I stand. Thank you.
Counsel President Pratt.
I agree with Counsel Reyes. And to Counsel Sacco's point, I think we've headed down this slippery slope a long time ago. We have five other neighborhoods where this has happened, and it seems like we're kind of picking and choosing at this point. That's what's hard for me. It's a problem. I honestly feel like the schools should be dealing with this in a better manner. They have parking for these kids. There, it appeared to me there was a safety, I mean, maybe it's not like that every day, but it just seems unfair to me to say, well, we did this for everybody else, but we're not going to do it for you. It's a bigger problem. Maybe it's something we should be talking directly with the school, I don't know, but I just don't think it's fair to stop it right at this point when these people are having an issue and there's parking a couple blocks away for these students.
Counsel Gonzalez.
I would agree with Counsel President Pratt, only because we have that study coming out, and if that study comes out, of course, it would help reset all of us, and that would be the fair thing to do. We heard the constituents, we have all the signatures of the homeowners that they want this. But it's also hard because, and I don't want to, I guess I ask, through enforcement, through the police enforcement, and we see somebody parking wrong, do they get a ticket? Do they get a ticket? Or do we not really, do we just give a pass? I'm just kind of curious. I don't know, maybe you answered this in the past. Because the enforcement was happening, if somebody's blocking the street, they get a ticket. Somebody blocking this, they get a ticket. I mean, are we doing that? Or we're just being cautious?
I'll have Chief Pickering try to answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, officers have discretion on when they do and when they don't. Typically, when we can attribute the vehicle being from the high school, a lot of times we'll contact our school resource officers and have them contact the students and provide education through that way. Our traffic officers and our patrol officers do issue parking tickets. Typically, they're the $10 parking violation through the city code, which is this ordinance covers. It's a $10 ticket. A lot of times, those don't get paid because they're $10 tickets, like most parking tickets in most jurisdictions. There is a state law that you can write for illegal standing, stopping, or parking, but that's a $50 violation, so. And that has to be actually written to either the driver or the registered owner of the vehicle. So that may get written to a parent or somebody who made it, to the registered owner of the vehicle, not to whoever's driving at that time, because it's parked, so. But yes, we do.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
All right. Counsel Sacco.
I have one more, I have a question. So we're doing this study, so we'll get more information soon. So when, if this ordinance is approved, there is a cost associated to the city in order to put up signs, I don't know what that cost is, that we might repeal in, when the study comes back. I don't know the answer to that. But do we know what the, what an estimated cost is to put the signs up and possibly enforce this new parking zone?
There's, so there's the cost of the signage, there's the cost of printing the permits, and there's the cost of enforcement. I don't have a sense of the cost. It's in the hundreds. I don't have a, a sense of the cost. It's in the hundreds of dollars. It's, it's, it's not thousands. But currently, we do not recoup any costs associated with the parking permit program. And that is something that we will definitely deal with as a part of this study. And I don't know how that will work going retro and parking permits that are already in, in play. Like, do we go back and charge them? That'll all be part of this, this recommendation from the consultant.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. Will you go through the process again with the consultant and the timing on that? And your thoughts right now about if we issue yet another one of these, you know, areas? And I get it. I used to live right next to the high school, but guess what? The high school was there first. I knew the high school was there. I knew people were parking near me, right? But could you help us again, understand this process and what it would look like if we had to repeal one of these?
So the consultant's work is currently underway. We estimate the first, I think through the scope of work, we should get our first report of whatever that might look like around the first of the year. And again, they're evaluating the process itself, the program, ways we could potentially do better. But that also includes working with the school district and how they may be able to mitigate their parking in a different way. You know, the, the history of this program was started not for the school, it was actually for an apartment complex. And that was apartment complex over off of 115th. And it is, over the years, has morphed into mostly around the high school. But there are several other intersections, or excuse me, other neighborhoods throughout the, the community to include the Stafford Hills, areas of Fox Hills. I mean, there's other neighborhoods that don't actually influence with the school. So that, that's why the program itself is being looked at. So do I see us repealing those? Probably, I, I don't see that we probably would, because this isn't just a school district issue. This isn't a parking issue that is, has had us evolved from other issues and other situations surrounding other parts of the community. So I think we're trying to find the best way that we implement this program, do it fairly, do it correctly, and do it in a way that, that does make sense.
Other questions, discussion?
Comments. So if we were to do away with all the permits and you just spread all the parking wealth everywhere, that would also work, correct?
Maybe.
There's parking over there, there's parking that we just did on the other side of school. And we still hold the apartments at a different place. But if we do not put those restrictions, you can just spread the wealth and maybe a couple, maybe four cars parked only and five over there. And, and then that kind of solves itself.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, but we don't know.
We don't know.
Sorry, I got to respond to that, just because this whole thing started because they were parking right behind the high, they were parking as close as possible. And we moved it out and Counsel Sacco was right, we're just moving it out. But it's still the, to me, it's, I feel like we're punishing this one group. And I feel like we're not expecting our students to be responsible to park when there's parking available.
Other discussion. Sure.
Sorry, this is maybe it. But I just want to, one more comment and one thing that, that weighs on my mind too, is that these are public streets that are for the public. And so I, I do find it hard to say that this, whether we like it or not, I, I feel like we're targeting one group of people, which are the students. And, and yes, there are issues that are coming with them parking there of not being, some of them not being respectful. And I get that, but I think that we should address the issue that is the garbage or the illegal parking. But I also feel like these are streets that everybody pays for, that everybody should be able to use. You know, and I think about if there's, you know, if somebody in this community has an event at 1:00 PM on a Friday. I mean, technically, if they have a party, those folks aren't able to park there. And so if we're not just targeting students, is that correct?
No, they are. There, there's a process in place for them to get a special event permit.
Okay, okay.
There's all those processes in place to allow those type of.
But technically, then they would have to go through a process to get an event parking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's a very, fairly similar, or a simple process for them to fill out and just get additional permits for that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Reyes.
I'm sorry, I just, I just think of things that, like the things that we're not thinking about. I, maybe it's just where I come from, but you get a ticket if you don't move, if you're parked there more than certain amount of hours. Or, I mean, they're not going to go away without giving you a ticket if you, if you're there. They're not going to, it's not, it's not tolerable. Because I have seen this, and I, I said this last time. I just remember an apartment complex being on fire in my neighborhood. And there were just cars parked all over. The fire department couldn't get there. They were struggling and 10 people died in that apartment complex fire. There were about 100 people living there. And I just have this thing of, when they came back and they did the whole survey or they, they came back and found out what was the cost of all that. It was because the fire department could not get into these, these, the apartments, the emergency doors. And the, there was a car that was blocked, blocking the, the water hydrant that they could not get to that as fast as they could. So I just have this thing in my head and I would hate, this is a big city, a lot of things happen in those big cities. You know, people die all the time, but it was just, I, I just would hate that that would happen in our community one day. Because we're not being careful or we're just, we can't, we can't find a student that owns that car that's parked next to a fire hydrant. Or it's blocking something. I think that we need to be, avoid anything like that as much as possible. Again, I just want to voice it. I want to put it in record because I know how important it is to have access when there's an emergency. When a second matters, to get that person out of that place so they can survive. That's my take. And if the student is not respectful and they're not respecting, then that, that's, we're just, we're just, we're just kind of showing the wrong. I don't know. I just say be respectful, follow the rules. Everybody does. And if it's a public place and if, if it's only two hours, then you need to come and move the car two hours later. Or something that I, I just think that it's not fair for, for everybody. And if there is an emergency, we will regret it.
Other comment. Lovely discussion. All right. So back to the first reading by title only. So as I hear it, we can do the first reading by title only. And then we can open the floor for amendment if it still wants to be amended. And then we can go for second reading if there's no amendment. And then go for adoption. And if adoption is not unanimous, the usual thing, it'll just come back the next city council meeting where it doesn't have to be unanimous. Correct? Am I right?
Your honor, that, that is appropriate for right now.
All right. All right. So I have a motion, a second. We've had a discussion for first reading by title only. Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counselors Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
An ordinance relating to parking, amending Toalton Municipal Code eight dash one dash two five two to add an additional street.
All right. To the plan.
I, it, it didn't sound like there was support for an amendment, so I'm not going to go down that.
Okay, all right.
I'll motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number 1495 dash 24.
Second.
Any discussion on those motions? Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Ordinance number 1495 dash 24, an ordinance related to parking, amending Toalton Municipal Code eight dash one dash two five two to add an additional street.
I motion to adopt ordinance number 1495 dash 24.
Is this a discussion or you want a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number 1495 dash 24. Any discussions in those motions? Counsel Reyes.
I support this, as long as it is within the hours that are, like the seasonal hours that we have talked about when school's in and the other times. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that too.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. I just want to make a point to say that not all the people that are parking there are disrespectful, right? Like not everyone's leaving garbage. I think that would be an exaggeration to say that all students are disrespectful.
Other discussions. All right, I'll flip it around. Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt. Counsel Sacco.
No, and I would just like to add that I'm voting no, but it's consistent with my votes on previous zone additions.
Right. So with that, we stop. Cause it has to be unanimous. Yeah, it has to be unanimous. You still need to vote? Counsel Hillier.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
And I vote aye. So it's four to two. So it comes back the next city council meeting.
Correct.
All right, that brings us to items removed. Thank you, chief. Items removed from consent agenda, we had none. Any council communications? All right, motion to adjourn.
Some moved. Second.
I've got that forsyth. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you everyone for watching tonight or attending tonight. Have a very good night.